This is to be the, our last board meeting of 20 committees. So, I'll start with the...
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Start with introduction, I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Annabelle Maramillo, Commissioner.
Suzanne Ogero, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner-elect.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioners Staff.
Mary Otley, CFO.
Lori Starha, Natural Areas and Parks Director.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
I also see that we have, there he is.
Tom McGuire with the Board of Commissioners, thank you.
And Alyssa Rash, Benton County Public Information Officer.
Last but not least, morning Alyssa. All right, next up, are there any announcements? Hearing done, we'll move to comments from the public. I do not see any public with us this morning. Number three, review and approve our agenda for today.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The agenda is approved. Item number four, our consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent calendar is approved. Item number five, Department Requests and Reports 5.1, in the matter of amending bylaws for the Natural Areas and Parks Advisory Board. And we have Lori Starha with us.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you for allowing this on the agenda. I had been working with our Natural Areas and Parks Advisory Board over the last probably six months to review the bylaws that were passed about two years ago by the Commissioners. The bylaws that we have before you are a reflection of aligning the goals and mission of the existing Park Board with the Benton County 2040 Vision Statement on Outdoor Recreation, which is Benton County actively promotes a range of outdoor recreation activities and will responsibly protect, manage, and develop our parks and natural areas. So, they have been working on developing items within the bylaws that addresses their roles and responsibilities as a board. So before you is a redline version of the existing bylaws and what changes have been made. If you notice, we've also included the new department name, which is Natural Areas, Parks, and Events Department. However, our advisory board will be maintaining the same name as it did in the past, which is Benton County Natural Areas and Parks Board, so that there's no confusion on the names. And keeping in mind that we, even though the departments are merging, both the Natural Areas and Parks Board and the Fair Board are being maintained separately for the departments. They do serve completely different roles, and we wanted to ensure that it was very clear on what their roles and responsibilities are. I can go through the changes, but again, it really highlights alignment with our 2040 vision that has been established. And they had worked on, I believe you have an attachment that shows a purpose statement for this advisory, that's kind of what they gleaned onto and incorporated within the bylaws. Commissioner Ogero.
I read through the bylaws, and I have a few questions. And perhaps you can answer them in the context of the discussions that were had within the Natural Areas and Parks Board. When I read this version of the bylaws, in the context of our 2040 focus area and vision statement for outdoor recreation, I feel that it doesn't completely cover the natural areas component of the work that the Natural Areas and Parks Department has done, and that your board in particular has done focusing on habitat restoration and enhancement, and on managing natural areas, not just for people, for recreation, but for ecosystem values. And I know that that's not the intent, but a future board and future people looking at this might interpret the mission far more narrowly, and I'm uncomfortable with that, with the omission of something about habitat restoration and conservation as maybe not completely co-equal values, but at least as values that we want to achieve, rather than just outdoor recreation.
And that's a good point. I don't think that it was purposely left out. There was several renditions, and I think that's a good point, and we can go back and add some additional requirements or our mission to this bylaws.
I think that part of it is not just the work that you've done, but when we look across those vision and focus areas overall, we separated out natural resources over here and outdoor recreation over there, and clearly, we don't want to divorce the two of those in the context of the work of the Natural Areas and Parks Board. And so it may just be that we need to also reference the Environment and Natural Resources goals in the context of the Park Board, or vision, I should say, vision statement. It makes it messy, but I mean, and I think that Commissioner Maramillo also has some input here.
No, I totally concur with that, because I think when we went in that direction, it was really to look at conservation as an equal component of simply recreation. And I think as we've progressed through the last 10, 15 years, we've managed to, you know, joint, merge that meaning. So, I do think that we need to focus a little bit more on that and make sure that that is a prominent feature, because that was really the intent in the beginning.
And I think that, you know, the Environment and Natural Resources Vision Statement is that Benton County commits to protect, conserve, and enhance our treasured limited natural resources and prepare for future environmental challenges. And that would, that would work too. So, it may just be that you have your work, the work that's within two vision statement areas.
So, I do have a question, because we do have a, the EnRAC Committee that has been set up and structured. Do you see incorporating and overlap between those two boards and committees that I would include in the bylaws? Or are you looking for some specific language around the conservation and natural areas specifically?
I think this is an area, an example of where we had trouble even in the appointment of EnRAC applicants, because many of them were interested in the habitat and conservation issues specifically. And we did end up recommending three of those applicants for appointment to the Natural Areas and Parks Board for that reason. So, I don't think there's going to be necessarily a clear-cut boundary between some of these boards. There are going to be areas of overlap, and we expected that. But I do, I would feel much more comfortable if the bylaws for the Natural Areas and Parks Board also referred to conservation. And ecosystem values perhaps.
Would you see that in the function portion, or in actually separate in the, under the vision statement? Because they, what they tried to do is really spell out their roles and responsibilities as far as, you know, supporting the department through education outreach, collaborating with other committees, departments, and outside partners to address the vision statement. So, if I expanded maybe on the vision statement a bit more at the very top, Commissioner Ogero?
That would be the overall view, I think, I think that's true. It should be in the vision statement.
Okay. I agree, and again, that's part of the reason I'm saying that these, this is an area where the vision statements and the divisions we made into buckets does not sit well with me, because I don't want it to artificially constrain what a board is doing in terms of our land management. Our land management for parks and natural areas is both for people and recreation, as well as it is for those ecosystem values. And, you know, I'd like to see both of those reflected in the bylaws.
Well, I can take this back and work a little bit more on the vision statement to encompass some of what I'm hearing here today, and expand on that. Certainly, in the roles and responsibilities section, references back up to the vision statement. So I think if we capture it up in the vision statement and enlarge that a bit, I think we can cover it with the rest of the bylaws. Does that make, make sense to go in that direction?
I would agree. There, I also got a couple of little typos, and I have one more question. And this is something that can probably be easily handled, but in section one, it refers to a non-voting student member. I am assuming that that is referring to a high school age student member. It's not specified, but, you know, we have college students on our, many of our other boards and advisory committees, and they are full-fledged voting members. So I just wanted to perhaps clarify that.
So, in the past, it has been high school. However, one member, I do recall one member when I first came into the department, had started as a high school, but went into college, and the board was already full, so they didn't want to lose this member, so he actually continued on as a college student. So I think the Park Board actually just kind of left it open. They didn't want to be very specific that it only was a high school member, especially if we had a college student that had an interest, but all the other positions were full, they don't, and that opening was there. They didn't want to not be able to select a college student if there was an interest. So I think that, they purposely left it open.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that if we do have college students that are interested, they don't have to automate, they don't have to be non-voting members, you know. I would like to see them as full-voting members whenever possible, but I understand the intent.
And then Commissioner Ogero, you said there was a few typos. I'm wondering if you might either give them to Teresa, so that I could get them corrected. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'll definitely do that offline.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Malone or Commissioner Maramillo, did you have any additions or subtractions out of the document, or something that I should have them consider?
My issues, we've already taken care of, so thank you.
Yeah, I would have the same comment, just a little broader statement in the vision statement, so what our, what our goals are. So, Suzanne, are the, are there changes that need to be made to the bylaws at this point?
Yes, Lori is proposing to take it back to the Natural Areas and Parks Board and discuss this concern of the boards, and she'll bring it back to us. And I will send her the minor typographical stuff.
Okay, so Lori, do you have what you need to proceed?
I do, and our next advisory board meeting is on January the 13th. So I'll work with Teresa to have this placed on the board's agenda sometime in, after that meeting.
Great. Well, I appreciate your efforts in getting this cleaned up, and a little broader comment about your work with, with McKee and the fairgrounds, and I think that you set a wonderful example for rearranging the furniture and just going about it in a collegial manner. And so thank you for your, for your efforts.
All right, well, thank you so much. Oh, yes, Commissioner Ogero.
I just wanted to say that I greatly appreciate the fact that you worked so hard to integrate the 2040 vision statements and framework into the bylaws, and I see that we're slowly doing that over time with all our advisory committees. And this, that's a good model, but of course, I think we're also just iterating and learning. So, it also, it shows an example of where we have some challenges with putting the framework into place. So, I appreciate you being the guinea pig. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome, and I think our, the Park Board members are going to be pleased to add some more to the vision statement. In no way, shape, or form did, the sense I have from them is they don't want to constrain it, but trying to maintain that framework of the 2040 is what they were trying to stay within the parameters. So, I'm sure they'll be pleased to add some more to the vision statement. Thank you, and have a good day, and you'll see me next month.
Thanks Lori. All right, 5.2, in the matter of amending bylaws for the Home Opportunity Planning and Equity Hope Advisory Board, and that's Julie Arena. Good morning.
Hi, good morning Commissioners, great to see you all. You should have in front of you a checklist, and also a redlined version of the bylaws. I'm going to go through them each, there's four, pardon me, and two of them are really just technical. The first one is one of those technical ones. The original bylaws had said that the meeting minutes would be posted seven days after the meeting. We have changed that, we're proposing that change to say seven days after the minutes are approved. The second one, and I'll just go through all these four and then ask if you have any questions, or if there needs to be any discussion. The second one has to do with a term limit. There are term limits for some board members and not for others, and it seems that we needed to have a term limit for the co-chairs for the board, who are elected from the full board, and a term limit for our business community representative, because the business community representative is an elected official, so they don't have any other kind of term. So we added in that two-year term limit for the business community representative, and also for the co-chairs who are elected from the full board. The third change is an absence policy for all board members, to full board meetings, executive committee meetings, and work group meetings that have been scheduled where the group says that they can be there for that time. And they settled on 90 days, based on input, really from the first responders on the board, who might be deployed to go fight fires for two months. And so instead of saying four meetings, the board thought it was more appropriate to say 90 days of inactivity. And the last change is just to delete a vestige from before the rest of the board had been elected, and that was when we had a chair for just the executive committee prior to the other one members being placed on the board. And now that we have two co-chairs, there's no need for a separate chair just for the executive committee. So those are the four changes. Are there any questions about those or background on them?
Nope, and you vetted them thoroughly up and down, so I think that those are all very solid, thank you.
Thank you. City Council for Corvallis approved them on December 7th as well.
Okay, I have to say that after looking at the Natural Areas and Parks Board bylaws, and looking at the parallel structure between our 2040 vision and vision statements for focus areas, I did the same for housing. And the language is almost parallel. It's not quite in our 2040 vision, we talk about affordable, safe, and stable housing, and in the HOPE bylaws, it's decent, safe, and affordable. So, we're that close. So maybe at some point when we can pull them together again, but I think that this does a remarkable job at trying to match 2040 even prior to having that framework fully in place.
Well, good, and also in the, to the next three months, as we look at policy recommendations, we're going to be looking at how they tie to the 2040 vision, and perhaps the 2021 amendments to the bylaws at the end of next year can have some language tweaks to make sure that we're in alignment with that vision. Makes sense.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I would move that we approve the amendments to the HOPE advisory board bylaws as recommended by the HOPE advisory board.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor of bylaw changes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, Julie, thank you for bringing us a nice clean bylaw changes, and really appreciate working to align bylaws and committee work with our 2040 goals.
Thank you, Commissioner Malone.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, will do.
All right, next up, 5.3, this will be a fun one. Update and discussion on remaining CARES Act funds. Mary Otley is with us, there she is, take it away, Mary. Full-looking, all Christmasy, look at that.
I'm having a different discussion with you today than I would have had yesterday morning. A lot has changed in 24 hours. I'm sure you're all aware that they now have extended the date that we can spend our CARES money for another year, however, we don't have much CARES money left to spend. However, I think the biggest takeaway I can give you is, I can, I can show you numbers, but they really are, you know, it just looks like they're kind of moving targets. We still, our biggest unknown is CHAMP Housing. We're having difficulty with them being able to do this, their invoice is because their file is so large. We set up an FTP site yesterday for the drop it in, and we haven't seen the invoices yet, so we're a couple months behind on CHAMP housing. So, once we get those numbers, I think we'll have a better idea of where we really stand by the end of December, for what it's worth. I still think we're, we're like right on the edge. We had a conversation, last week you agreed to an additional $50,000 to the 2020 new businesses, and they were able to, the request, we had 12 businesses request, which was a total of $6,000. So there's an additional $40,000, and yesterday, before we knew this, we had agreed to turn it over to lending works. This morning, we've decided to hold it back, and so we do have the $40,000 that we committed last week, which was part of the $50,000. So there's $40,000 uncommitted at this time. Kate and her group asked if we would, if we were okay with holding that out until we know, have a better plan for it, and not just rush to spend it. So there is $40,000 out, committed for economic development, but with no plan as of this time. I do believe our biggest concern was the cost of contact tracing, and we have the health folks really working hard to make sure that there's funding for that, and I believe there is, either between the state's money that they've received, or the federal government is, is earmarking medical, medical needs. So I think we'll be okay. That was going to be a really expensive cost if we weren't going to get any funding for it. So I think we're good that way.
Mary?
Uh-huh.
On that note, is there any concern that the funds that will be, that will be coming in, will have a start date, so we can't go back and cover our costs for the contract? What was it, we ran out of money in September, or something like that?
Actually, on the contact tracing, we have, we were afraid we were going to have to give money back. That was Monday's conversation as well, in that we had received money, albeit not all the money we should have received based on a headcount, that we weren't able to spend. So I think we're, I think we're good. I think we get to keep the money, apply it towards our costs, and then go forward from there. But we'll get more details, I think, as Suzanne plays in with the health authorities. Joe may have an update on that, I don't know.
And Mary, question for you, Joe Kirby here. When you and I met with Suzanne yesterday, she was indicating maybe a gap of anywhere between $100,000 and $225,000. You may recall that from yesterday's executive committee meeting, and she was going to, she was going to go off and work on that yesterday afternoon with Charlie and April and some others. I don't have a report back this morning on that, but do you have any further information on that? I did brief Commissioner Malone on that concern yesterday during our weekly meeting, so that's, any additional clarity you have would be beneficial.
Well, that's, but I believe, that's the funds that we already had, that we were going to have to turn back, and I think we're allowed to keep them. going to have to turn back, and I think we're allowed to keep them. But like I said, I'm not 100% positive. That was the biggest concern we had, is that we would actually have to turn the money back because we hadn't really spent it. It was our allotment on a per-case basis that we, even though we haven't received all of the allotment on a per-case basis, what we have received, we haven't actually spent. And we're going to be able to spend through the end of December.
So Jill, just try and close the loop with Suzanne today on that particular topic. Just make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep, I will do that.
And Mary, sometime next month, will we get kind of an accounting of what's happened and the money that went out and the money that's still remaining and kind of a...
We'll have a better handle on that. Our accounting probably, it'll be after, it'll be later in the month because of the timing of all the invoices and the payroll costs and things. But yeah, we'll have, we'll have numbers for you mid-January or later that actually have some meaning. Hopefully, we'll have the CHANCE Housing invoices in by then. That is our big wild card.
Well, it would have been nice to get this information a little sooner, but at least, at least they did this before the end of the year.
Yeah. It's an interesting, been an interesting year, and then to end it this way, it's like, okay, just kidding, you don't have to give the money back.
Mary, just for additional clarity, it sounds like you don't believe we're going to be ultimately over-allocated, or meaning overspent our CARES funding. So it sounds like you think we're going to, at the end of the day, probably be right at zero.
Yeah. My numbers right now, if I take out what I know is happening, again, chance that we're at like $15,000 to the positive, you know, but I think the chance invoices are going to come in a lot higher than I had predicted. So I don't know.
Well, I guess another question to be answered later is, how does the new federal dollars fit in with the original CARES Act? Is there going to be a dividing line? And anyway.
Yeah. The biggest wild card right now is what the state's going to do with the funding that they had. They still have quite a lot of money available that should have gone through to the local government. So we need to pay attention to what the state's doing with that. For some reason, I think it's like $400 million that belongs to the local governments that they were holding on.
There were a lot of local governments, especially small cities, that never even registered to receive any of the dollars. And that is, so you're right, there may still be a significant sum there. And some counties and cities really underspent, but I'm sure they don't want to give the money away.
Yeah, a lot of them, they didn't want to follow the, you know, the, all the accounting rules or the documentation, and so they chose not to take it. So we could, I think, I think January is going to be really interesting when the legislature takes up and the new federal government takes place as well. So I think right now, I think we're okay, and I'm particularly that the health cost, the contact tracing is going to be covered. I'm fairly certain on that one. And the vaccines and the staging that we, as a county, our responsibilities are.
Okay. Do you have any further details, Mary?
No, maybe tomorrow they'll have new rules. Maybe they'll give us a week. I don't know.
Well, we really appreciate you trying to stay on top of this bowl of jello that kind of hard to pin things down. But I think you've done a great job and appreciate that you kept us informed as much as you could. Suzanne?
I have one question, and that is about the CHANCE Housing. The, with the CARES Act money, the relief fund running out, are we going to continue that contract with CHANCE to hotel and motel our fragile folks? And if so, how is that going to be funded moving forward?
We were going to fund, our plan was FEMA, so we would get reimbursed for 75% of it. So this may change that, but it is FEMA eligible. So we were going to put it through our FEMA accounting mode.
And I know that there was some discussion, and it didn't make it into this bill, about clarifying that all coronavirus FEMA-related expenses would be covered at 100%, and that would give states and localities more flexibility and more funding, you know, upfront without all of the extra paperwork of CARES Act special mutiny. But that, maybe that'll work its way into the January legislation, if there is such.
Well, the FEMA situation may depend on who's, who's running FEMA after January 20th, and so there's, I know there's been serious discussions about changing the formula to 90% or 100% because of the significant dollars involved, and that, especially with the states and local governments not getting directly, getting direct dollars from the bill that the President should be signing as we speak. So stay tuned, another January discussion. Any other?
I would just like to interject, and one of the Commissioners mentioned this, but I would really like to underscore it. Mary Ottley has worked so diligently on this over the last couple of months. It's really like trying to land an airplane on an aircraft carrier, and then the boat sinks at that. So Mary has put so much effort into this, and I told her yesterday, please don't pull her hair out in frustration here at the last minute because she'll look like me. So anyway, Mary, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your efforts. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, you know what? It's a bad, it's a good problem to have, is that we had these months, these funds, we had the funds, and we came through it fairly, you know. It could have been devastating, and so that I can be thankful for. So, thank you.
Well, and before the change in deadline, I just imagined you working New Year's Eve to balance the books to get as close to zero as you could, but it's nice to be able to take a breath and have time to actually do the accounting that's needed. So absolutely, thank you for, I mean, I felt throughout this process that we were in good hands with you guiding the money ship here. So, thank you. Anything else on finances?
No, thank you. Pat, this is Annabelle. I'm going to go off camera for a bit. I'll be right back.
Okay. All right. Next up, item number six, new business, 6.1, in the matter of appointing a negotiating team for the Criminal Justice System Improvement Project entering in a brokerage agreement and authorization for negotiating team to develop letters of intent, including initial offers. Nick Kurth, take it away. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Malone, Commissioners, Commissioner elect White. I'll just pause for a second there. Oh, I think that's Annabelle's.
Annabelle, your mic is on.
I'll proceed. I think all of you are aware that relative to the Criminal Justice Systems Improvement Project that I'm managing, over the past couple, three months really at this point, we have been assessing and prioritizing sites related to facilities associated with the project. We've been winnowing that down, engaging, beginning to engage with prospective property owners and entering into sort of early exploratory conversations and negotiations. We've really reached a point where we need to formalize what we do next with respect to these conversations. The, our timeline is closing. We need to have solid sites, viable sites identified in the next month or two, or the project timeline will be impacted. So I have before you today three measures all related to continuing and advancing these discussions around site acquisition. Three measures, the first being to create, and I'll summarize at this point, but to create a negotiating team to enter into a brokerage agreement with Commercial Associates Gary Pond, and then to authorize that negotiating team to advance letters of intent and to negotiate, or to offer, to make offers based on the real, the market value of the properties and leading indicators to define, to define that offer. And I'll, I'll read through these in their entirety if you wish, but what I wanted to say first is that this is a formula or process that the county has used previously, most recently in its site search and ultimate acquisition for the facility at 4500 Research Way. I'm assuming you kind of recognize it. It served the county well as well as prospective sellers in that, in that last transaction, and so it was proposed, I think actually maybe by Gary Pond, but was proposed and discussed between myself, County Administrator Joe Kirby, Vance Croney, whether to use a similar format, and was agreed that we would. So the motions reflect what we've used in the past. I think the only differences are specifically the negotiating team includes Vance Croney, Joe Kirby, and myself. And in measure three, a slightly different situation here. You may recall with 4500 Research Way, at least, we had a identified seller who had already advertised an asking price. In that case, we, the motion was related to a certain percentage of the, authorizing the negotiating team to make offers up to a certain percentage of the asking price. In this case, we have a bit of a different situation where we don't necessarily have identified sellers. Some we do, some we don't. So the motion has been crafted to provide a little more flexibility relative to the price. It's still based on essentially market data. The other thing that is different in this situation is that in some cases, we may have entire or portions of parcels that we are seeking to acquire, and so there needs to be a little more flexibility in terms of arriving at a fair market value for a portion of a parcel. And so the wording in the third motion provides a little more flexibility with respect to that. Would you like me to read through all three in their entirety? No? Okay. The motions are before you, and I'm asking, and the CJ Ops team is asking that you approve the motions so that we can move forward with ongoing discussions and move into a more formal negotiation with prospective sellers? Joe? Oh, you're muted, Joe?
Thank you. Just to highlight that there is a updated motion that I forwarded to you via email this morning. That motion is somewhat different for the third motion. So as you're making those motions, motion one and two still remain the same. Motion three has been updated based on a discussion Nick and I had earlier today. So if you'll follow that suggested motion that was emailed to you this morning for motion number three, that would be what staff is requesting.
Thank you. I think that updated motion provides more flexibility, as Nick stated, and this will be important as we move forward. I'd be happy to start making those motions if there are no other questions.
Go ahead, Suzanne. Do you have questions, Annabelle? Okay, go ahead, Suzanne.
I move to appoint Vance Croney, Joe Kirby, and Nick Kurth to form a negotiating team for the Criminal Justice System Improvement Project regarding real estate transactions with the option for Croney, Kirby, and Kurth to add or subtract members to the team as needed.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion number one carries.
I move to authorize the, entering into a brokerage agreement with Commercial Associates Gary Pond.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion number two carries.
And third, I move to authorize the negotiating team to work with Gary Pond to develop letters of intent as necessary, including initial offers, not to exceed market value, which will be determined by utilizing leading indicators such as comparables, appraisals, and real market value as calculated by the county assessor's office.
Second.
All in favor of motion number three, say aye.
Aye.
Motion number three carries. Well, now you can get to work, Nick.
Thank you. Thank you to all, and happy sunny holidays.
Thank you. Same to you.
Bye. All right. The last main item is item number 7.1, discuss county goals. Do we want to take a five-minute, this may be an extensive discussion. Do we want to take a short five-minute break before we start Sean's presentation?
Yes, please.
Five minutes. See you soon. Well, I think we're ready to go, Sean, so go ahead and start the discussion on Benton County's goals.
Sean, I'll just jump in real quick. Good morning, Commissioners. Sean, McGuire, and myself are here this morning to talk with you about our 2040 initiative. Laleah Neville is unable to be here this morning. This falls under her umbrella, as you're aware, so she sends her regrets. She could have a death of family unexpectedly. So Sean and I will be walking you through this this morning. We hope to hear a lot from you. Sean will lay a foundation for you, and then we'll be posing... Uh, Sean will lay a foundation for you, and then we'll be posing a question and/or questions to you. Uh, so a little bit of history, uh, as you know, prior to COVID, we were working on trying to, what I will call operationalize our 2040 Initiative, uh, meaning how do we begin to, uh, take that initiative, uh, and the, uh, core values, uh, and really begin to inculcate, if you will, uh, those into our organization. Uh, part of that is really, uh, helping, uh, guide departments and setting goals, uh, that support the 2040 Initiative, uh, in addition to, uh, having the board set goals, uh, that will also help drive budget priorities. And frankly, that's where we're headed over the course of the next month, is, uh, to seek input from you today, uh, in terms of what we'll be calling county goals and priorities, and, uh, and taking that information and sharing that with the departments, uh, so as they're developing their goals and their budgets in support of those goals, uh, that we're really beginning to align the organization, uh, with our 2040 Initiative. Uh, this is not an overnight situation, uh, we won't change the world, uh, between now and the end of January, uh, but we are taking the next step. Uh, admittedly, we were delayed, uh, by COVID, uh, so that was something that, uh, unfortunately was dropped in the midst of this initiative making progress, but now we are back on track and, and, uh, Sean is going to, uh, help us move down that track this morning. Uh, we did allocate two hours for this, so any of you that are listening in, uh, be prepared that we do believe that this may be a lengthy conversation, uh, up, up to two hours. So, uh, we don't have to take that much time, uh, but, uh, we do have that much time allocated. So with that being said, Sean, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Joe, I appreciate that. Um, while I do a quick little intro, if either Erica or Tricia can maybe, um, present, uh, it'd be most gracious so I can share some documentation. Um, thank you, Joe, that was a great intro. Um, I also wanted to just start and, and mirror what you just said about how we're, as you say, uh, building a plan to be quiet. Commissioner Ogeron, thank you for your comments to Lori this morning about how, you know, we're, we're walking our way through this, and whether it's, uh, committee boards or, uh, resolutions or whatever, um, now that we're coming out of COVID, now we're coming out, and we were on the precipice last February of really understanding, uh, trying to just test the waters, we're looking back in and, and re-engaging that. And so thank you for that. Um, I know Lori's been a champion of this, and we literally refer and Charlie and a couple others from the very, very beginning when I started in 2015, um, but now we just are. And so what, oh, uh, thank you, Tricia or Erica, um, what we want to walk you through is some quick background, but really dive into the purpose exactly as Joe just said. What are some of the initiatives, what are some of the goals or priorities that you have as commissioners? Um, we have not done this exercise for two years, and we'll get into that. So as we embark upon the new budget, um, as these are coming together with 2040, making sure that for the first time they're truly married. Uh, last biennium, I think we did the best we could. We made mention of it in the intro and the narrative, we provided some material, but we just didn't have the time to really marry the two, and we're hoping in this process we will. So, uh, apologies real quick, we, see if that gets going. Okay, uh, just one more second. Hashtag 2020, I'm learning all kinds of new stuff. Okay. Um, so here we go. Um, so yes, the outcome of today really is to, uh, identify these high-level policies issues, uh, and hopefully from that list, we can start to identify some, a smaller number of priorities. Before we dive in, we wanted to just give a quick overview of how we got here, um, uh, foreview of, I'm sorry, the commissioners and the commissioner-elect have been here at different times, and so we wanted to give a quick overview of how we got here. So the first level is the development of our core values. And that is, back in 2018, well, before that, 2016, uh, we had our 2040 Council. These were 20 community leaders that led the initiative to create the, uh, our core values. It was a year and a half public engagement, two phases of public engagement to capture these. Um, again, you probably say 4,400 individuals, 10,000 comments. This really was a concerted effort to go up to our communities to understand what they want, what they value, what they like about living here. And that's where this comes in. And I, I also, to marry what was, or, I'm sorry, to reference what we just talked about, uh, I know that a list is on here, uh, and all, and, again, all the things that we had ready last spring, uh, were booklets, uh, that are coming out that will capture these, that we are, uh, were working with, uh, it was Madison Avenue to, to get that going again, uh, websites, internal engagement, these things. So you're, we're going to start seeing more of that, uh, in early 2021. Moving on, uh, from the core values, that was in 2018, uh, the council approved that or, uh, person that, and then the commissioners, uh, the next month adopted the core values. From 2018 and then, uh, in late 2018, as I said, that was the first time that the commissioners over at the depot with, uh, poster paper festooning, uh, the walls, who walked through what these 10, what are those 10 core values? I'm sorry, focus areas. What I mean by that is, we needed a translator. Uh, the core values are not designed for a typical bureaucratic organization, and so how can we, uh, translate, operationalize, uh, lens, whatever, whatever word you want to use, uh, how can we as an organization move toward and positively affect those core values? And that's why the focus areas were created, and then the commissioners created subsequent vision statements for each one. That was, uh, I'd say 2019 because that one was officially adopted, uh, by you, by the commissioners that were there. Um, so this is what we're talking about from the top down. Uh, these are the, the, the top of this pyramid that you see here. Also going on is the, uh, from the bottom up, which is from our, uh, directors and staff. And so last fall, uh, Joe directed, uh, our directors to identify at least three goals for their department that aligned with at least two of the vision statements, or the focus areas. So they did that. And that is what you see here. And this is what we sent out, um, I think it was last week. And so what you can see here is about, depending on how you define it, 34 goals that came from the bottom up from these department directors, and identifying all 10 focus areas, and just kind of, again, align those two. We, the community has told us what they want, we kind of tweaked it a little so we can use it, and then the department directors came in with those 34. That is where we were, uh, last, uh, coming out of last January, February, and that's when you hear kind of put on hold. Since last November, last two months, the last month, wow, this, it looks like forever, uh, that Joe is now meeting with the directors and doing two things. One, reviewing those goals, and also instructing directors moving forward to how can he, how can they reply to these goals, uh, moving forward for the next budget, as well as address the needs, the, the desires viewed as, or as goals, priorities, et cetera, which is the purpose of the meeting today. And so that's where we want to, uh, I want to very briefly kind of get over how we're here, why we're here, and what the intent of. Before we move on, I just want to make sure I captured how we got here. If there were any questions or comments. Yes, Commissioner Ogeron?
I really, I really appreciate how you pulled this together in a really nice presentation for how we got here. Um, and, uh, covers all that messiness, that iterative process that we went through to get here, right? Um, but the, um, I have a little bit of discomfort about the fact that the work we are doing, um, is going to instruct the directors to identify goals. I think that it's, again, it's got to be that top-down, bottom-up, um, and there's some negotiating room there, that whatever we decide today is not going to, um, uh, be the absolute mandate for what departments do, because we have to recognize that they do have all of those state and county mandated services to perform, and not everything is going to fit within the kind of the discretionary priorities of the organization.
And that's a fair statement. Um, and it, it just gets to the amount of input that's coming in that we need to address. Um, we're going to get into, uh, the next slide, it starts getting into, uh, what exactly these are mandates or things that are completely internal. We have inward-facing departments that are all, that the public has, doesn't know even exist, or they do, but they're not, it's not germane to them. There's a lot of pieces here that how we characterize that in our narrative, um, that whatever model we come up with fits those, and we respect all of those different reasons. Joe, I didn't know if you had a, I'm sorry, yes, you did?
Uh, Sean, I just wanted to add, uh, the layer that is reflected by individual staff goals. Uh, commissioners also keep in mind that we have a performance management team, uh, that's been in operation for, uh, quite a few years now, uh, and that particular team has been really focused, uh, the last couple of years on using our NeoGov, uh, which is our, uh, performance management tool, uh, which helps us do performance evaluations and set goals for staff. So we have put a lot of effort into, uh, ensuring that every staff member has one or more goals, uh, to achieve as part of their performance evaluation. And as we begin to continue to build this out, uh, it's really intended to ensure that individual staff members can look and identify one or more goals that are in their performance evaluation that are in alignment and/or supporting, uh, department goals, county goals, focus areas, and ultimately the core values. So, uh, I would like to say we've put an enormous amount of effort, uh, the last two to three years into development of individual staff goals, uh, in support of department goals.
Joe, thank you very much for that, I really appreciate. Um, I felt a little uncomfortable, I didn't have access to specific goals, I know, uh, one great example is Rebecca Taylor and her work on TDBG, uh, that and, uh, her housing episode, absolutely. Um, again, just making sure that we're linking, it's all the way from cubicle to commissioner, and, uh, we're all kind of working together for the coming goal. Thank you, Joe, for that, uh, any other questions moving forward?
I just want to say I like the cubicle-to-commissioner, uh, phrase, but I think I would say cubicle-to-community maybe, uh, with the commissioners as a, a waypoint in between.
There we go. I like that, too. Okay, so moving forward, this is how we got here today, and the purpose is, it's kind of, how do we merge all this? Uh, I didn't, and now before we go too much further, the purpose of today is to, to stay high, um, to stay up, there's a, again, there's a myriad different pieces that were kind of fit together, uh, far more than we can do today. I think just kind of visually imagining us back at the depot with, uh, poster paper, I think that that's enough, uh, that'll take us some time along. So, so just to kind of get the juices flowing, um, I know I had sent this out in the email, uh, probably a little later than it was, I did some my apologies, but, uh, you know, we've already talked about some of the high priority things that we're already doing, and with homeless and housing, I, I saw it really early this morning, uh, on Hope, we have the Criminal Justice System, climate crisis, uh, just oddly enough, we talked about outdoor recreation, um, I was having a crystal ball last night, uh, and then it's also just references some of the internal things. And, uh, again, concerns are a little crucial, last week, we are doing great things. We have all the pieces, that's not the issue. Right now, we're just trying to capture, uh, additional pieces, additional tiles, and we will create the mosaic in the coming weeks. And so these are some of the ways that we just kind of, I think, bifurcate abilities, so recognize there are external and internal, uh, initiatives, activities that we're moving forward on. And so the intent today is to, to capture these big picture issues, uh, Joe called goals, strategies, uh, priorities. Um, I, I really want to put aside our dictionaries. Um, if we want to use the word goals, fine, strategies, fine, initiatives, uh, sometimes we get a little bit, uh, focused on that. It, we're just trying to capture, capture ideas, capture what you, as commissioners, would want to do in the next, uh, next biennium. Uh, this is draft, we're, we're trying to fit all these things together. Uh, your input is going to be included, obviously, but as we move forward, it's not like an edge in stone at this point. And again, we're, we're still at 30,000 feet. We're not into the action plans, or who we're going to do this, and who's going to do this, and how, and it's, we need to reduce homelessness. Okay, that, that's kind of where we are. And then we'll start cascading down, uh, as we move forward. Once, and, uh, we're going, there's a couple of ways we can do this, but once we, uh, the commissioners and commissioner-elect, your input is gathered and we get the list moving forward, they'll return to this and, and review that list to see, are there specific ones, a handful, we can't have, if you have 87 priorities, you have zero priorities, uh, what are those small number that we as, uh, with, for the community, that our government really wants to move forward on, and you commissioners to galvanize the work here that our government is doing, uh, to, to make sure that those handful get done. Before we move on, any questions on the intent of how, what is we're moving forward? Joe?
Sean, if you can, uh, just explain kind of our timetable over the next couple of weeks, and if, if that's later on in your presentation, that's fine, but I would like the board to understand that bridge, if you will.
Thank you. It was my last, but let's, let's get into it. So the, uh, in working with Joe and Marion, our intent is to capture your input today, uh, pull it all together, and then, uh, myself, Joe, and Lilia, after the holiday next week, hopefully Lilia's back, um, that we will have a formal structure for you commissioners to review and approve on Monday the 4th, on, on the 5th. We'll present that to you on the 4th to review, and on Tuesday, January 5th, to get that right, uh, we'll come back to you, review, to accept. And once that is accepted, Joe will then send those lists of priorities out to, uh, to the directors, and so that they can start to, just as they did, uh, last year, what kind of goals can they do to positively address the priorities you've set forward? That way we have theirs from internal, direction from commissioners, and, once again, we're melding those two things together. Uh, and then, if I remember correctly, February 11th is when budgets were, are due, and now it's when those goals will be finalized, and then we can really start to pull together a formal recommendation, um, in the budget, uh, narrative. Did I capture that correctly, Joe? Okay. More other questions, commissioners, on that timeline? Okay. Thank you, Joe, for, uh, we can begin with that or end with that, so thank you for bringing that forward. Okay. So, let's move on to this document. So again, it's in a perfect world, uh, we were back at the, uh, back in the depot, I would have this somewhere on the, on the board, and we would just kind of walk through. Uh, my, my, uh, intent, or I guess the one way we can do this is, uh, is to send an email, it'd be great if commissioners would do, maybe spend five minutes on providing their initial input, and then we can have a discussion as we fill this list. I put these four, assuming that because they're already, uh, moving forward, that I don't see either, any of these four coming off the list of important initiatives that we're moving forward on. But to start filling this in, just like we would on, on white paper on the wall, and we can walk this and just go through with this, um, if I see no objection to that, just kind of, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ogeron? Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you saw your hand.
It was a, it was a sneeze, uh, so, sorry about that.
The downside of the Brady Bunch, if I just do this, I'm going to, okay, uh, I'm going to, hold on, so, my, uh, so, uh, I didn't know if there was, uh, Commissioner or Commissioner Malone, this chair, if you, uh, wanted to go first, but my thought was five to 10 minutes each, somewhat of a popcorn kind of exercise to start the juices flowing, um, and then, again, this is not an editing issue, this is not a wordsmithing, this is one of those big picture policies that, that you want to see moving forward. Um, I have to put anyone on the spot, but either as Chair of Commissioner Malone, or if anyone else?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll take a crack at it, Sean. Uh, I was thinking about this last night, and, and, uh, the, uh, climate crisis, I think, uh, should, uh, should be front and center in, in our thinking and budgeting. Um, it, uh, at times can, um, be a little bit vague how to, uh, what are, how to address it, uh, and, you know, you, you've got, uh, um, solar, uh, but I, I... know, you've got the solar, but I would also probably add to that just energy efficiency in general, whether that's efficient vehicles, efficient buildings, and we have a real opportunity at 4,500 to, you know, value into practice. So, I guess, this is something that I've been working on, thinking about for most of my adult life, and it's, we've, as a society, as a country, we've dabbled for quite a while, I think of 1980, and that had some pretty good momentum in energy efficiency, housing. There were solar panels on the White House, and we had an election, and they got taken down. That was not going to be a priority in the 1980s, which is unfortunate, the sooner you start solving large problems, the easier it is, the more time you have. But we have kind of frittered away decades, and I think it's time to, let's see, we don't have any more time to dabble, this isn't something nice, feel-good, and as a county, we can show leadership that this is, this is really important. So I guess that would be my emphasis.
Okay. In addition to the four you see there, are there other high-level issues or policies that have to do with, I'm just throwing these out, economy, transportation, these are the ones, again, just to get the ball rolling, high-level?
Yeah, I definitely should talk about the economy, but all our good ideas and plans don't work if we don't have economic support to move forward. And I guess, I talked a little bit about transportation under the climate action, but I think that's such a big, big part of what we do, that I would think that could have a separate line.
I might just pretend to, okay. Were there specific guidance for either of those?
Yeah, on transportation, I hate to call it alternatives, but emphasis on transit, multimodal paths, just, and we're making modest progress along those lines, trying to get pedestrians and bicyclists across streets more safely than we have in the past. And there are actually crosswalks with blinking lights, and, oh, pedestrians do have some, some rights. I think that's, that's a good, that's a good, good start.
Okay.
As far as economy, right offhand, I can't think of specifics that we can do, but I'm sure before the end of this discussion, I'll have something to add. It certainly, Sean.
That's fine. Then that's worth, I just, again, just to kind of get the juices flowing, that was the only intent of this. Those were your big ones, we can move on to another commission, is that fair? Commissioner Malone? I see our commissioners' hands up for just two quick seconds. One, please, please on a trip of my notes, it might be cavalier, just quick, so don't, you know, this is just getting my brain on paper. And second, I might be getting this sundial effect, there's 10 minutes every day in my house where I get this cool little, whatever it is from the shade, so my apologies if I look kind of weirder than normal, let's just put it that way. So Commissioner Ogero, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I have to say, the highlight on your nose in particular is what gives it the Rudolph effect.
We're on.
I really appreciate the framework. I agree with the priorities that you had already listed at the top. We are already working, as you've noted, very intensively on addressing the issues of homelessness and housing stability and affordability through the HOPE Advisory Board and our partnership with the City of Corvallis, and work that we're doing with folks at the state level. I agree with the climate work? Tell me if I'm going too fast.
No, no, no.
The, I think that with respect to climate, we have plenty more we can do internally, and our goals are very much focused internally, but I also believe that we could be upping our game by working with external partners and trying to figure out what we can do with the community, perhaps, to work on some of those climate goals. And I'm not sure what that looks like. That would be an evolution, and it, I don't, I don't know. Clearly, this is an area where we've also used our advocacy. We have sent supportive letters to both our state legislators for climate action and for federal action, for things like a carbon tax. So, moving on, the--
Commissioner?
Yep.
You just, you just linked two things, and I just want to clarify, if you don't mind?
Sure.
When you said your tax, that has a purely, that has obviously an economic impact. Would it be unfair to link climate change or climate crisis with that line of the economy?
It would be, yes, I mean, you can't, they can't be decoupled naturally, yeah. I'm comfortable with that. With respect, yeah. I was trying to start with the goals that we already had stated, and then move on into the ones that are emerging. And so criminal justice and equity, diversity, and inclusion are clearly, for me, top of mind, with priorities for the county, and I would want them reflected in any budget document that we put forth, because we, they are initiatives we are working on now, and will be for the foreseeable future. The Equity Committee, well, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, I view as both an internal and an external process, and we have stated in hiring our new coordinator that we will be beginning with internal conditions and examining how we provide services to the community, but I expect that it will be very much an internal and external process, because we have to be in sync with the larger, with our communities as we do this work. We can't do it in isolation.
I'd like to add to that a little bit more, too. And here, the way that I see this chart, it's focusing on people, on staffing, but I think we have to also build in recognition about what diversity really means and how it affects people. So I don't want to let that, that drop by. I'm not talking about specific training, I'm talking about changing the culture of acceptance, and, and, for, kind of longevity acceptance.
Yeah, the inclusion piece of that, creating a welcoming environment and culture, and supportive environment, so that if we do bring in people that are very different from the majority, that they feel supported and welcome, and not just tokenized. That's critical, I agree. So I would like to add one to the list, and then I'm going to come back to the others that are here. The other one that's not on the list right now, that I believe needs to be, is emergency management. And again, it's related to the others, you can't completely separate it, but we have to acknowledge that we're in the middle of the pandemic still, and so emergency management is both an ongoing and active, critical issue area, and we're going to be addressing COVID-19 into this next biennium, for sure. But it's also an issue area where we want to ensure that we have the staff capacity and skills to address multiple emergencies at the same time, as we did last summer when we had wildfires, and be ready for even larger perturbations, whether they are economic or a Cascadia, subduction zone earthquake. And I call this out, too, because addressing our capacity for emergency management, both internally and in terms of working with community groups, is part of Joe's goals moving forward for next year as a county administrator, and so it's clearly a priority area, since we have called it out as a board for Joe to work on in the context of the organization. So that, so there's, you know, the ongoing and potential activities, ensuring that people are trained adequately and yada, yada. Anyway, that clearly also ties into the economy goals, in terms of having an economy that is more robust or resilient to these kinds of natural and anthropogenic shocks to the system. It's also related to our transportation system in terms of needing to ensure that we have bridges that are more robust, and multiple Egress systems for, in the case of fire or earthquake or whatever, or we need to have floating pontoon bridges on hand somewhere so that we can get across the Willamette. So that is something that I think we have to keep in mind.
Very, very, I just, I want to make sure I'm capturing, because I'm hearing you saying two things that are related, but I'm hearing they're separate. There's the emergency management response that we heard both from going out to public engagement, as well as last summer when I had the interviews, which was, as I said, we had a fight last night, and we all know all too well, we've already seen flooding. There's that management response, which is now, I'm also hearing resilient, which planning for the future. Now, I'm hearing that as related, but separate. Is that fair, Commissioner Ogero?
Yeah, I think that it's, they are both complete, they're both relevant, and we have to learn from what we're doing now and plan for the future, and we can't do, it's not an either-or.
Right. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. I just want to be clear to capture your input.
Thank you. And then the last comment I want to make is that with respect to the economy--
Yes.
--I feel that as a county, our role is, we don't have as many levers, put it that way. The economic context is truly set by the state and federal government. We have to be very cognizant of the property tax burden that we place on our residents, and any other taxes and fees, and we can help incentivize certain kinds of actions, but we don't have as much leverage in that arena, other than being a forum and helping to set the stage for discussion on this topic, and how the economy should reflect all of our other values. So I, this is one of those that I have a hard time setting up as an organizational priority in that sense, because I don't feel that it's as actionable, and yet, it's an implicit priority in the same way that kind of health and equity are. Without some sort of an economy, we don't have, we don't have anything else. But it, that's just me philosophizing at this point.
Were there other--
Go ahead.
Were there other topics?
I think that these are my, this captures my top priorities, you know, personally. There are plenty of other things we do, but, and that we should be doing, but I don't, I don't have anything else to add at this level. The only other thing I would mention is that with respect to climate, we have talked about, I can't remember the name of the program, but there is a tax assessment-related tool that we can use to incentivize energy efficiency, and I know that Kate Portia and Tammy Tracy have been working on that, but it has been kind of sidelined by COVID, like so many other things, and I would, I don't want us to forget that, that we do have some other tools in the toolbox for that sort of climate efficiency, I mean, climate action. And I'll stop there.
Okay. Commissioner Harmio, I see, what were your thoughts on, or your contributions?
What's your question again, Sean?
I'm sorry, just the same as Commissioner Malone and Ogero, what were the top priorities, ideas, issues that are most concerning you, that we should be moving forward on?
I'm trying to get to the top of the seat here, I, oh, obviously, thank you, thank you. For me, climate crisis is really important, and, and then ensuring equity, diversity, and inclusion are important. But they all have, they all impact each other, so I have a hard time trying to prioritize which is the most important here, because they are interactive and interrelated.
Okay. In addition to the ones you see, economy, transportation, emergency, were there other big topics that come to mind that are important to you?
Right now, I can't, I think most of what I'm thinking about, it's within all of those areas.
Okay, okay. Then that's fine, as we move forward. I also ask, we'll do with this after we get through. Okay, Commissioner Harmio? Commissioner Wies, I know you're coming in, always curious on what your thoughts are about emerging issues, again, broad policy issues, those things.
Sure, thank you, Sean. Can you guys hear me okay with this headset? Great. So I would say the top four that you have listed there are really, hit the nail on the head for the top of my priorities. Things like transportation and, you know, emergency management, those things are all very important, but if we're trying to get to, you know, the top priorities, I'd say those top four would be right up there on my list. The only other thing that I would add would be county government transparency and accessibility.
Nancy, I didn't get the last part of your statement.
Oh, county government transparency and accessibility, so just making sure that people have access to our meetings, the minutes, the packets, knowing when meetings are happening, you know, easy to navigate website, all those kinds of things.
And Commissioner Legwies, I want to share with you, just how we were doing this, we were focusing on outward, one thing I did not share, just for timing and perspective in the budget narrative and talking with Jenny Abiel, is to have a good governance. We haven't nailed a term down yet that addresses that exactly, and that was one of Jen's high priorities, and I assume so as well, is to have a section of, we have, and Phil's going to add, correct me if the portal, we have a ton of staff engagement, the innovation initiative, we have some things in charge that I just did, just for timing, that's it, but I really appreciate you bringing it up about having a good governance, you know, about us being good stewards. and us being good stewards to our public. I didn't interrupt you, Sean, I want to know that that's going on behind the scenes.
No, yes, thank you for clarifying that because it is kind of hard to figure out where it fits in. You know, I have in my notes internal, so. But at least, you know, it's out there, it's in the record, so thank you.
Were there other, I'm sorry, Commissioner Harmio?
Yeah, I had one more in terms of, you know, thinking about all of these. One of the things that needs to be noted under transportation and transit is that that kind of encompasses, it's not only about emergency management resilience and having good roads and stuff, it's also about how it affects climate and how it affects movement of people. And the importance of people being able to move around and just didn't want to lose that thought.
Amplifying on that just for a moment. With the incoming administration, I think that we, I'm hoping that we may have a serious shot at an infrastructure bill from the federal government. And I think that it really would behoove us to focus on thinking ambitiously, thinking big. What would be those projects that we would want to see reflected in that kind of legislation? So, it's an issue of timeliness over the next biennium. It might not come to fruition in the next biennium, but I'm hoping, I think if it does, it will in the next couple of years. So, and the other thing I wanted to mention is that in scanning this list, I can, I agree with Nancy about the top four priorities and then I would add emergency management to that. So, it makes it five, I don't know if that's too many, you have to think about that. But the one thing, one area, very vast area that the county focuses on that's not reflected at all is public health or health. And I just feel uncomfortable leaving it off the list and off the discussion because it's what so many of us in the county work on. And it's physical and mental health, it's the whole big kahuna. Obviously, health is one of our overarching values. But I just couldn't, I couldn't consciously leave it off the list.
And that's what we're here for today. At this level, let's populate with everything under the sun, that's fine. And then we can fine tune and then highlight, and I appreciate all you commissioners identifying before we got B four and emergency management, whether or not it's present, we can nail down words later on. But we're starting to capture what we want as well. Before we go, as a next step to make sure that we're capturing all these, and before I go forward, Joe, I didn't know if you had any, as a natural break, if you had any comments. My next step was to review the focus areas, just to make sure if there's anything lingering that, oh, I forgot about this, or you forgot about that. But Joe, I didn't know if you had any comment at this stage?
I had one on the economy and that we actually do is supporting our small but hearty economic development folks that before COVID, were working on economic resilience and trying to get ready for shocks that might be coming to the system. And we got a real shock. And so, they're doing their best in trying to keep local businesses afloat. But, so I would add that under the economy section.
Just it. Thank you, Commissioner. Joe, did I hear people, I'm sorry.
Sean, I was going to share and reference to Commissioner Ojero's comment relative to public health. I do think that a number of those items that are in the top four, if you will, that you've been speaking to, really do support and relate directly to public health. And so, I do think that there's, public health is infused in those. But it doesn't mean that you can't or shouldn't have a separate priority to more stand alone. But Sean, I think that going through the focus areas would be important. So, I fully support you heading that direction.
Thank you, Joe.
I appreciate that comment, Joe, and I would agree. It's that health in all policies vantage point. And we need to be thinking about public health with respect to any of the initiatives that we put forward or any of our priorities. I just didn't want all of our health staff to feel left out. So, yeah, it's a big issue. And mental health specifically is an element of both the housing and homelessness discussion and the criminal justice discussion as is addressing the needs of people with disabilities. So, it is infused in the other elements. Thank you.
And just as background, everyone, oh. That was a long conversation we had. And I really wanted to shout out to our health, especially Sarah and Charlie and others that vacillated with that, is it on its own or is it embedded? Because it's pros and cons. If it's just on its own, oh, it's transportation, there's no health impact. And I really appreciate the social determinants of health, how they are embedded in all of these policies, but should also be respected on its own. So, to make sure it's X-axis, Y-axis, however you want your brain works, to make sure it's both on its own but also embedded in everything we do. Okay, well, let's see that real quick. So, one of the things that I thought, again, we're in that kind of just flickering in your brain and making sure we're capturing, we think, just to revisit our focus areas, just to make sure that we're not forgetting some, you commissioners are not forgetting, or, you know, those are just the four that I captured to get the ball rolling. But also, just to revisit what you, what you came up with as your vision statements and just to make sure, and again, here's the health equity and resource efficiency as a common denominator for everything. And if this just doesn't spur something, oh, again, this morning, over her view, talking with Lori about outdoor recreation and the environment, while obviously there's a connection, they're also separate. We haven't talked too much about the environment specifically outside of climate change, which obviously is related. So, I just want to leave this on here, if there were, if this spurs an idea or spurs a policy issue that is near to you, commissioners?
For me, I was thinking about that outdoor recreation piece as well. And I see it intertwined with a couple of other issues. The multimodal paths is, you know, those have been a priority for the board through the transition of various commissioners over time. And that's definitely both a recreation and a transportation issue. They can't be undone from one another. And a lot of the natural resource issues do get rolled up into that climate goal. So, yeah.
I guess I would like to add, I'll underline about community safety. That is a big part of the county's efforts. And I'm not sure it's been, it's included in any of the items that we've already had other than emergency management.
It's also implicit in the criminal justice system's work and in the vision statement for criminal justice system's improvement.
I do want to say, thank you, Commissioner Malone, for bringing this up. You know, it's that this is that overarching vision. Within that vision are subsets. And I think that that's what we're also walking through because this is our first time. Mind of planes we build is kind of a thing where what is the vision and what are those pieces underneath it? Yes, the community safety is our overarching vision and criminal justice is a major part of that. So, I think that's another issue that we're walking through on how to best recognize that, appreciate that, how to react to that, and how do we positively address that.
I would also say that our equity, diversity, and inclusion work is a major contributor to community safety as well and to the values espoused in that vision statement.
Again, I will go back and make sure and spell that. Okay. Any other figures on these five? We've talked, these are the main ones, I think, I believe that we've talked a lot about. I think what I'm curious about a little bit more, we talked about transportation, obviously, housing, homelessness, housing security. These three we haven't really addressed yet specifically. Obviously, resiliency and food is a huge, and this community came out bandwagons on addressing it and being supportive of that issue. But so far in our conversations, I have not heard this, heard these three topics. I didn't know if you have, if you commissioners and commissioners-elect have thoughts on these. It's hard sometimes to think about these things in such a critical emergency management focus that we're on right now. But I did not want to leave them alone because they were huge contributions and our core values. And you commissioners identify these as a top 10 focus here. So, I wanted to stop here and kind of get your input on these. Commissioner Ojero?
At the risk of talking too much, the arts and entertainment, culture and history, it's a big basket. And food and agriculture, to some degree, I feel are similar to the economy, the prosperous economy bucket. We have a lot less leverage in that area or a lot less tools to directly affect those areas. But we are very much, we can be a thought leader, we can contribute to, we can support external organizations that provide those amenities and those, support those values in the community. So, I see that as arena for partnerships at least as much as for the doing. But I want to emphasize one thing that I think is really important and that I've struggled with ever since I became a commissioner. And that is our ownership of historic resources. And the fact that those, that historic resource management doesn't have a, it's probably too strong a way to put it. There's no one person that really owns it. Inga Williams in community development has some responsibility for the Historic Resources Commission. But we don't have, from my perspective, a clear plan or vision for how we want to manage our historic resources, investing in them, making them more accessible, or for interpreting them. And this is an issue area that laps over into the food and agriculture, into outdoor recreation, into equity, diversity, and inclusion because of the, because these historic resources can be interpreted in multiple ways. So, I feel that putting together some sort of a historic resources plan and vision is an important thing to do. It's not, for me, at the same level of the top four or five priorities. But maybe in four years or six years, it should be. But it's just, it feels like it always gets short shrift.
Is that correct, Commissioner? Is that fair? Did that fair capture what you just said? Okay. I think going through all the listening sessions, going through and the interviews this summer, I think that's totally fair. And it's so many of these topics that don't have a home. I love what you just said, there's not a single entity that is looking out for these, but they are also an anchor in our community that so many people, and if it's gone, people are going to recognize. And it's kind of that heart that you don't really, yeah, you don't miss until it's gone. And there's a struggle there when we look at priorities when we look at COVID. We have flooding today, we have these major issues. When do these things that people treasure live at the top during these stressful times? So, thank you for that, I certainly appreciate that. I did, the one thing I did want to talk about with these two, and I might have to kind of inject or spur, that we did a really great, our community galvanized around making sure food is available to our residents. For-profit restaurants, Matt Gillespie has been talking it and the public has said that multiple times in my interviews over the summer, him specifically, greeners, all of these things. We're also looking at, that was required by our community. I didn't know if the commissioners, you felt like the rural community agriculture was something that, obviously, it's a critical component of our community. But it also raises to that, I'm not even talking about priorities, but what are the things that we can do as a government to positively support them? If that's at least, that should be at least on the list, whether or not during these times it's the highest priority, but at least on the list of what we can do as a government to either support what's going on, be a direct player in what's going on. I was, I just wanted to bring that up because it was such an important element during this emergency of the past year. But even before then, going through the core values, talking to the farm bureau, I'll lean up over at Cherry's, which is a lovely conversation. And just making sure, and 4H, all of these, this was a really big component in the fairgrounds. So, I just, I didn't want to pull it aside at second to last, but I did want to bring it to the attention to see if the commissioners, you had any visceral reaction to this.
I think we have support in theory, have limited direct impact there. But it's something where we can support the partners, whether it's 4H, extension-type programs. You mentioned, I think you mentioned the fairgrounds. Make sure that that's, it's kind of interesting since I've been a commissioner, emergency management or, oh, well, or safety issues. Oh, we'll just go out to the fairgrounds. And, you know, when my key kind of, she's too nice to roll her eyes. But yes, we have the space, no, we don't have the staff or we don't even have a, you know, emergency generator or... So, I think there are limited things that we can do to support forestry and agriculture. I guess the direct impact would be property tax kinds of issues and make sure that what we're currently doing aligns with this goal.
I would amplify that a little bit further and say that the one major tool that we do have is our interpretation of state land use law. And this one for me is a balancing act issue because the state land use laws that placed a very high premium on agricultural and forest land were put into place 60 years ago, 60, 50. And they have not necessarily kept up with our current economy. And with, and so, I see the, a real need to balance agricultural and land, and rural, the rural interests there with the current nature of workforce needed for those ag lands. And especially if we're talking about local ag rather than export ag, which is more labor-intensive, and the need for possibly more kind of rural residential nodes. And I, this is an area that quickly becomes very political. But I would love to see the county have a clearer vision for what we want in terms of that. of that, um, balance and ability to then argue for it at, at, at the state legislature. Because I feel right now that what we're doing is basically just, um, keeping a very strong tight line to the state land use framework, rather than having a clear vision for our interpretation. And that, this comes out in ways like, um, interpreting the, our land use laws to facilitate a gathering together farm restaurant or, uh, the, um, other kinds of, um, economic activity on farmland as well, uh, that is, might be more tourism related or recreation related, rather than agriculture per se, uh, but the way that the land use laws define agriculture, um, or forestry is very limited and constraining. So, um, again, state policy, but we have to know what we want if we're going to, um, get there.
Commissioner, uh, uh, just again, I just want to make sure I'm capturing what all four of you are looking at. That seems to me to be a common denominator across the board, that we as a local jurisdiction, and I, I mean, the vast majority of my professional experience is at the state, so we got it from the feds and local government gets it from the state, that there is a, this is what the higher level wants, and then we just have to go along. And whether it's our economy, whether it's our land use planning, or housing, or I work over with Greg and what's a tiny home, and what is this, and what's that? You know, how do we carve our own path, but also be in line? And I, that's why I put that little bullet there, Commissioner O'Drill, I hope I captured in some way, shape or form what kind of the philosophical issues that you were, you were addressing. So, um, I just wanted to check in with you and make sure that what I wrote is not, i- is, is fair.
It is, and, um, I just, in order, if we have, if we want to get to that goal of being able to have food self-sufficiency, which I, I don't think we'll quite get there, but if we even want to move the dial greatly in that direction, we have to have a little bit more flexibility in our land use, uh, laws or their interpretation. And so it, if this is an area where there's a direct conflict between some of our stated goals and values, and I just wanted to highlight that. And that's, that's where this is. It's, it's very much at the intersection of those values, um, so, yeah.
Okay. That's great. Any other comments, Commissioner Harameo or Commissioner Elect Weiss, on the ag world? Okay. And the last one, I wanted to make sure that we had, at least, I, I want to bring forward, whether we addressed it or not, that's obviously up to you, but I wanted to spur the conversation. Now, this came out very much so in our, in, in the public engagement. Not only do, is this a NOSU thing, this is LBCC, high schools, uh, trades, all kinds of things, but just to make sure that we have lifelong learning. And it was, it was very nice that we had, uh, I can go back to this, it was great that we had so many, uh, departments of all the things, there was lifelong learning that came out, I think it was tied for safety, with the most amounts of departmental catching it to, and it was great. I, this is one of the ones I was a little surprised at, um, that so many departments found a way to say yes, whether it's, uh, I think it was IT that had, uh, specifically going out to women, uh, and, and, and technology, uh, it works. It was a good way to make sure that, that our departments had that. So between the, the input from the public, my interviews over the summer with, uh, a NOSU rep and the former head of LBCC about how lifelong learning is not just, oh, something you can do, but especially with COVID, do they need to redefine either higher education or what we want from our schools? I know that you commissioners are in total control of the school district, but it was just, I want to spur the conversation, I don't want to leave, I just kind of make sure that we're addressing these things, but if you had input or, or thoughts to include in this list? Okay.
I guess I have to jump in again.
Okay.
Uh, uh, because at least I, I have jumped into this arena during COVID, um, because as we've, as we've learned, um, education and our education system is so intimately in, in, involved with our economy. Um, and we have, uh, created a false dichotomy between education and childcare, um, in, in the way we do things. And, um, and, um, in the process, we devalue both. Uh, and I, it, it, again, it's not an issue area where we're the leaders, uh, but I think that we, um, need to think about how to better support, um, education for all and equity in education. Um, and, um, yes, uh, so we do have a role to play. And one of the ways that we are going to be doing that this next biennium is that we are part of a consortium that is going to do, um, an engineering and marketing assessment for improved broadband services throughout the county. And, um, so that will directly support in, in the infrastructure sense, the potential for lifelong learning and for economic activity and for health, all of those. So, um, w- w- yes, uh, we recognize I, that it, it's critically important. And the lifelong learning, again, is involved in the historic resources element, it's involved in, um, the, the work of, of the departments as they have recognized themselves, um, i- in our advisory committees and boards. Um, it, so it, I think is another one of those implicit values and a, a, part of what we need to decide is whether there are some, um, explicit priorities that we should be recognizing as well. Um, and then, uh, lastly, um, I'll mention partnerships because, uh, uh, we do have, uh, good and I think deepening partnerships emerging, uh, with both Oregon State University and Lynn Benton Community College, um, and with the school district through our, our public health work and mental health, uh, work. Um, so we have, uh, at least a supporting role to play, um, with all of those education partnerships that are in the county.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Elect, was there any other contributions you have on, on the broad spectrum of lifelong learning or education? Okay. Okay. So, um, I believe that we've gone through all the 10. Um, I, again, I, not that we had to, not that we have to include everything, but again, just to spur conversation and thought, we have quite the list, but, uh, to be honest, what I've heard, and now I'm going to go Canadian, I'm going to say sentences that sound like a question, um, that the big ones were homelessness, I heard the top four from all four of you, that homelessness, housing, security, I'm just going to be looking at nodding heads, the climate crisis came up, I think on every single topic we had, okay? Um, I don't want to look at verbiage, but let's just say criminal justice was another high priority, okay? And then, uh, equity, EDI in some way, shape, okay? The one, and then emergency management that also was merged in some way, shape or form with resiliency, that kept, kept calling back and forth. I don't want to speak for any of you, but that's what I was hearing. Is it fair that we can somewhat tease that out as we move forward? But I heard it, uh, two sides of the coin, one response, but also make sure that as we respond, we're also preparing for the next event, the next shock, and in fact, we're probably going to have multiple shocks at once. Did I butcher that, or is that at least a fair ballpark? That, Commissioner Malone?
Uh, I, I don't see why, why those couldn't be rolled in, in the long.
Okay. Is that, is that fair? Okay. Again, I, our job is to take this and smooth it out, um, but I just kept hearing these, uh, oh, I'll keep going. We'll do, uh, spot check later. Commissioner Malone, I didn't interrupt you.
Uh, cool. Like I lost the thought, but, uh, i- i- it wasn't major. But just, I guess, uh, you, you, you're always, uh, as far as the emergency preparedness, well, planning, uh, for the future, and then sometimes the future comes and here, here it is, deal with it. Um, um, but it should, it, it should be part of a comprehensive, um, plan. That, that you modify after, uh, you, you've responded and figured out what went right and what went wrong, but, uh, I, I, I see that as, uh, continuous.
Okay. So I want to, I want to be, I, sorry if I'm overly explicit or redundant, but I'm seeing, what I heard was housing, climate act across this, criminal justice, EDI, and however we want to, uh, specifically identify emergency management preparation and resiliency. Did I get that wrong? Okay. Not seeing any shaking, okay. So, uh, this was, this is a perfect list, um, as we go back to the pyramid, um, and I should stop right there. Joe, I have to put you on the spot, but I didn't know if you, um, I had my closing remarks, but I didn't know if you had any input or you wanted to end with your comments?
We can't hear you, Joe.
I have two mute buttons, I'm going to have to, I've got this speaker and one on my computer, and so they, yeah, I'm still confused. But, uh, I was just saying that I think we made major progress this morning, and I appreciate being able to hear from the board. I've taken copious notes, Sean, I'll, uh, email those to you at some point today or tomorrow morning, and so you can compare those against yours. Uh, keeping in mind, Board, that we'll be coming back to you on Tuesday, January 5th, to say, here's what we heard, give you the final opportunity to, uh, make any changes to that, and then on January 6th, that's my intent to turn around and, uh, share this information with, uh, department heads and other elected officials, so they can take it into consideration as they're developing their minimum of three goals, uh, that we are requiring they submit as part of the budget process, and that their budget, uh, shows a connection to supporting those three goals. So once again, alignment is what I'm looking for, uh, and this is certainly a journey, and we took a, another step, uh, in that journey today.
Good, uh, thank you, Joe.
I, I'd like to add one more comment if I can. You know, I, I appreciate that, that you, you looked at, at the priorities, but looking at the remainder of the list, many of those pieces fit into these priorities.
Absolutely.
So we're really not losing them.
No. I think for, um, as we move forward to find, uh, the pyramid in the middle, is that tension not to jam everything into five tents, where it's just now, so we're right back to where we are, we have 87 priorities within our priority, but also recognizing that these five priorities permeate into so many of the different processes or activities that the county does. So finding that balance is, is, is our ultimate objective over the next few weeks, uh, to prep for the budget. I hope that's, that's fair. Excellent. Um, I certainly appreciate your time, uh, I hope it was well worth it for you. Um, hopefully at some point in the future, we can go back to the depot. For some reason, I just like writing on paper more than, uh, trying to type and move between monitors, but that's just my personal preference. Um, and as Joe said, uh, we'll be back, uh, in the first week of November, uh, January with, uh, for something to react to, so I, I appreciate your time, so. Joe, did you want to, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
I just wanted to comment that you do a masterful job of typing and spelling correction on the fly, uh, probably the best I've seen, so no apologies needed.
Is that a right clue? It sounds like a right clue.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you. Um, so that's the end of my, I, I didn't know if you had that, uh, final comment?
Uh, I, I had one, uh, you mentioned the timetable, uh, a draft, um, Monday, the, uh, 4th of January. Can we, uh, um, you can get to your notes or, or what, what we've been working on here before that? This is a lot of information, and I, um, wouldn't mind a little more time to mull it over, but I, I, I didn't know exactly what's, what you had in mind.
What I, and I'm, I'm sorry, I saw Joe, you turned your, your microphone on. What I, what we were planning on was, and this is weeks ago, so obviously, uh, recent events are going to impact that, and previous plan was for Joe, myself and Malia next, uh, it is next week, uh, the 20th, the week of the 28th, to take all these notes, get all these, uh, frameworks together and present something to you, considering the New Year's, I believe on Friday, um, for Monday. But I'll, I'm going to defer to Joe to see if that timeline needs to be.
Well, Commissioner, I think the reality is, you know, just managing expectations here, uh, the reality that we can have anything to you prior to Monday, January 4th, I, I don't think that's a possibility, uh, considering the holidays, considering that Malia is out. Um, you know, if you're just looking for a, um, a random list of, uh, notes, you know, we can provide you with really raw information, but if you're looking for what we're going to be presenting to you on Tuesday, the 5th, uh, prior to that date, other than Monday, which we've agreed to, I don't think it's feasible for us to get that to you, uh, the week prior. So I think at this point, the final or the, the draft version that we're going to be presenting to you, uh, you'll see it on Monday, uh, the 4th of January.
Oh, fair enough. Commissioner O'Drill?
I just wanted to acknowledge, and, uh, this might not be the right time, but before we lose any other people, um, that are, uh, watching or listening to our discussions, that this is Commissioner Harameo's last meeting. Um, and, uh, I should have jumped in at the beginning of the meeting and acknowledged you, uh, but I wanted to say thank you, and thank you for all of your incredibly valuable input and service, uh, to the community, uh, all of our communities here in Benton County over the, um, last, um, many years, and, um, we will miss you.
Thank you, Zan, I appreciate that. Um, I wanted to, um, dedicate this last formal board meeting of mine to Monica Lucero Espinoza, youngest of my, um, first Lucero, first cousins, who passed two weeks ago to COVID. And, um, there's still a lot of pain in our family, and will be for some time. So I want to really say that everybody needs to adhere to the guidelines, have to be safe, please follow the guidelines. And there's a lot of criticism out there about this is happening, that is not happening, but that is happening to a lot of people, so, so we just all have to pay attention to that. And, um, although this is my, uh, last formal board meeting as a commissioner, uh, I certainly am going to be around, uh, watching and, and, and making comments now and then, so, um, thank you, and I'm going to stop there because I'm going to start crying in a minute. Thank you.
Well, Annabelle, we will, we will find ways to keep you engaged and, and use your vast experience, uh, and I know I've certainly benefited from, um, the two years that we had, um, together on, on the war, so, uh, thank you for that, and I, I, I think there may be other opportunities to, uh, um, uh, talk about Annabelle's service to the, the county and the state and the whole wide world. So, um, I think it's at, uh, January 15th is the, I think the official one, hopefully that, that's not a secret, uh, party for you, Annabelle.
Well, I hear that, I hear the planning is going on anyway.
As we speak. So, um, well, well said, Zan, and, and, uh, so we will, uh, get more people in, involved in a, uh, happy send-off event, uh, middle of next month. So I see Don is, I, I did have a comment. So I see Don is, I did have a comment, Sean, that your sun on your face, I couldn't figure out if it's a sundial or a calendar. But, and it could be both. But I assume that it doesn't happen other times of the year, other than the solstice here.
I am learning there's a 10-minute window, literal window in which it hits. But there's working from home and the dangers of homing from work. This is one of them. I'm in the living room, and that's just what happens. So, yes, sometimes it blinds me. I had a meeting with Commissioner Harameo, and I'm doing one of these things, so anyway. Thank you, Commissioner.
And glad to see the Christmas tree in the background there. So I keep track, and I will check you off my list here. So, like Zan said, I'm amazed that you're able to capture random thoughts and turn them into words and on the fly. So that's a real valuable skill in this process that we're in. And looking forward to getting some more momentum behind the 2040 project. But there's a real, a lot of planning ends up in a nice binder on the shelf or in the computer somewhere. And, you know, I think we need to honor all the effort that's gone into this and make sure that this doesn't end up on the shelf in today's meeting. And I think really helps going forward that we, we are serious about implementing the ideas that have been developed over years of work. So really appreciate your being central to this effort. In fact, I remember probably my first meeting before I was commissioner and at Sunset Meeting Room there, and I saw this guy up at the board writing like mad. I wonder where we got him? And then I found out he was one of the employees. Well, that's a good deal. So.
My partner says the exact same thing. Where'd I get this guy? So, anyway. Thank you for your kind words, Commissioner. I certainly appreciate that, and I would only do it because, I'm sorry to share this with you, having folks like Jim Devaia and Ben Adams and these folks to really push me to be a better professional and to really, obviously, speak for the communities, but also, they spent two and a half years on this, and interviews over the summer. This is a great place to live, and there's some amazing voices out there. That's it. It makes the job a lot easier. So thank you for your kind words, Commissioner.
My pleasure, Sean. Thank you for your presentation this morning. Next up is item number eight, information sharing. I think we've shared a lot of information. Do we have, do we have more that we need to go over?
Just a brief update?
Okay.
With respect to the Willamette Criminal Justice Committee, where I serve as the lay chair, I just wanted to let you all know that the committee, the full Willamette Criminal Justice Council formed a subcommittee on mental health crisis services. This was the result of OSU coming to us to talk about whether or not we could build as a series of, a group of partners, a better mental health crisis response rather than simply law enforcement response to people in need. And we met for the first time yesterday. It was a productive meeting, including representation from Oregon State University, from Samaritan Health Systems, the county, and the city. So it was, and the city of Albany, Corvallis and Albany were there. It was a great discussion for a starting point, and we are going to move forward after we gather three years' worth of data to describe some of the mental health crisis calls and the welfare checks and some of the other, and to put the hospital fees from their perspective in the emergency room and at the acute care site board. So I think we're on a pathway towards helping define what the real gaps are and what the real needs are with respect to both the OSU population on campus and the greater community needs, both in our cities and out in the rural areas with respect to mental health crisis. So I'm looking forward to that conversation and keeping you all up to date as that conversation moves forward. That, the other point there is that as the lay committee chair, we have a separate meeting from the full council. And often, prior to my chair role and since my tenure, we have not used that meeting very well. In fact, we have not met many months at the scheduled time. So I surveyed the membership of the lay committee, and moving forward, put together a calendar of discussion topics and learning opportunities for the lay members of the Criminal Justice Council to dig in a little deeper on some of the long-range issues with respect to the criminal justice system. Mental health-related issues was far and away the greatest interest of the group. But I will be working with our staff and others in the community to put together a series that hopefully will be of interest to that group and perhaps beyond, be able to help educate folks about some of the issues that are facing us. And one of the big ones, of course, is the effects of Measure 110, which decriminalizes street drugs down to a level of violation. And we don't know how that's going to affect us, either in terms of public safety, public health, or funding for school districts and our health department, or there are so many unknowns. And lastly, on that point, Representative Rayfield asked me to help him by putting together a local group of folks that can inform him about how we anticipate the effects of Measure 110 and what our concerns were. We haven't had a chance to identify a date yet. I think that Representative Rayfield was a little busy with yesterday's special session in preparation for that. So I'm looking forward to putting together that meeting for our partners in this arena, including juvenile and mental health and the DA, law enforcement folks sometime early in the new year.
All right. Annabelle, do you have any thing you'd like to do, share with the group?
Well, all I can say is I'm really not liking isolation. It's hard on all of us. And so, and I know that this zooming around the meetings is very helpful to getting our work done, but sure, it's not the ideal way to do it. I like interacting with people. But we shall move on, and I don't know what's coming up for me in the next few months. Right now, I'm immersed in dealing with curves and insurance and all kinds of things like that, which are not fun. But that's all I have to share right now.
Well, it's coming too late for you, but I think there are better platforms coming other than this Hollywood Squares kind of format where we can pretend to be around the table and be able to pick up some of the nonverbal cues that are an important part of conversation. So, because I think this remote-type meet meeting will be with us for the foreseeable future and not just related to COVID. This is, in some respects, a more efficient way of getting together without the travel time. So, but this is what we got now.
I don't disagree with you on that. It's certainly helpful on the wardrobe, didn't have to go out and buy any new clothes.
There was some joke about a lot of trousers and our being turned into Goodwill or at swap meets. Who needs pants anymore? So, but I guess we had our first CIP meeting last Friday. Lots of proposals and kind of like we did today, that was our first run-through. And, oh, that's, oh, that's $11 million. And some items weren't really appropriate for CIP. We'll meet next month and then have a more realistic list and go through and figure out if any of these can be postponed to the following biennium. But that's in the works, and this discussion of 2040 priorities, I think, will be helpful in going through that part of the budget. It's the other thing I had, hopefully Joe's still listening. I would really appreciate his efforts in general and specifically about filling, helping fill some of our many department heads and other key people that we've had to replace recently. And persistence has paid off, and I think we're in pretty good shape. And we still have some important slots to fill. But Joe, I really appreciate your extraordinary efforts on behalf of the county to find the people that will help move this forward. So just wanted to make sure, everybody knows you work hard, but I thought I'd pick out one kind of specific thing that you've done that really puts us in good shape for the shiny new year that's coming soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome. It's absolutely been, it's been exciting. It's always great when you have the ability to add new team members to the team. So it's actually been a privilege, and I sure focused on it, I would agree. But it's like a larger team just than me to make this happen, and patience and perseverance. And not every road is straight, and I would certainly say that was the case with our most recent recruitments and what we did persevere. But a big thanks to HR and others that participated in the process.
Well, it, all your efforts have really put us in good shape for going forward. And hopefully, we'll have a smoother year next year. So, I don't know if we need to go to item number nine and other, or have we already done other? Is there anything else anybody wants to add? Okay, well, I will close our last board meeting of 2020. Probably see, well, we don't have a whole lot next week, so may not even see your smiling faces much before Christmas and New Year. So stay safe and try to figure out how to make the best out of what we have to work with as far as holidays, celebrations.